The bay, you know, where the sidewalk comes and then it continues on through that private property. Feel like where Carolyn Church lives. I was trying to think of the guy on the end from Carol.
Lyndon?
Yeah, but from the gray house up at the front where you first start those, that neighborhood. Who lives there? The guy that used to do the T-shirts?
Reglin.
Reglin.
Oh, yeah.
You know that house?
Yeah.
Well, from that house on is private.
Oh, you're talking about the sidewalk itself, yeah.
And I see, you know, last year Mark asked me about putting a sign up there because he said people bicycling go in there. And we talked about it, we didn't do anything, and I see today I saw a whole group go down there, that of course.
They need a sign.
They were ordering a sign for that.
I mean, would it be a big deal to stick a sign down there that said, "Private sidewalk or private property" or something?
He's gonna order one.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our voices. Call me your order, full call.
Mayor Westegre?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yep.
Reese?
Yes.
Do we have anybody who'd like to speak at public forum?
One second here. Okay, again, for our, for our online visitors, there's, you can certainly raise your hand online and we'll try to, to acknowledge you as, as you raise your hand, otherwise you can unmute yourself, you'll, you'll have that ability, so. Any comments for public forum?
Okay, we'll move on to present agenda, any additions to that? What should we approve?
I'll move.
Second? Full call.
Muller?
Yes.
Wolfman? Reese?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, the building permits, any motions for those? I'll make the motion. Second?
Second.
Full call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yep.
Tom's?
Yes.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on a proposed amendment budget change. In public forum.
Any, any comment, any public comment online?
Opposed public hearing.
Head shaking, okay.
Okay, resolution 2033. You want to say anything about the budget?
Just on, so the explanation was on page five, and I know we had some discussion on that already. Here's the explanation of the hundred, $121,000 transfers, actually is $85,000 from, to electric improvement from TIF, that's that economic development transfer, it's a internal transfer, just paying ourselves back for some debt. Additional $12,000 for water sinking fund and $24,000 to our dump trunk, truck sinking fund. Additional funds.
Said we should approve 2033, second?
Second.
Full call.
Okay, Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 508, this third and final reading.
I make the motion that we approve the ordinance 508.
And I'll second it.
Full call.
Tom?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Wolfman?
No.
Stankin?
Yes.
Okay, that was third and final reading, ordinance 509, I have ordinance to change our building permits.
I'll make that motion to approve that.
Second?
I'll second.
Full call.
One second. Okay, roll call, Muller?
Yes.
Tom's?
Yes.
Wolfman?
No.
Reese?
What are we changing them to, or?
This is the requirement to have the elevation drawings or blueprints and the residential design standard checklist comes along with, with those, the building permit applications.
Yeah, too many complaints about that, I'll send out.
Stankin?
Yes.
Okay. 2034, we knew the contract for the Camp Crescent, we figured out how to cut some money off of that.
Yeah. Hello there, Dave. Let's take a look on page 17. We've worked with the ten-point construction about identifying these cost savings. And there's, there's four potential cost savings and actually one little, little addition on that. To, so, the, the first thing there, item number three, had that swell, propose to put that drainage swell through there. This would propose not to construct the swell, but we would install an eight-inch tile, about 400 feet of eight-inch tile. So this takes it about halfway up into that area that's being developed with the, the new concrete pads. So, and it would go right in an area where, where now water cannot flow towards the lake, but there would be an intake place there that would still drain some of that water from there. And water from all of this area would still be graded so that it goes to the east. Some of it would go to, to this intake, some of it does drain, from the north part drains to the north. You know, this has been raised-
But this will alter the flow to the north, right?
No.
I mean, it'll be about what it was before.
I say it should only, having access to this, this intake should improve that in some parts.
Okay.
You know, Dale Beckman had expressed lots of concerns about drainage issues there. We sat down and went through this option today and still have some concerns about it and about whether this, whether this truly alleviates potential standing water and flooding problems, which I, I can't tell you that it's going to completely alleviate things, okay? The, the newly constructed area will certainly drain to the east and that, and that will drain and overdrain over towards this intake and towards this area that drains to the north. And I feel pretty good about that, it just doesn't address a lot of the other standing water issues down there. So that's changed, that's a big change, number one, and there's an $8,200 savings out of that. The biggest cost savings here actually has to do with doing away with a lot of the asphalt or concrete paving for patches. So these are areas where they're cutting through the road to install the sewer or they're disrupting that whole area there around the dump station. So this does away with virtually all of the pavement replacing. Because fact of the matter is, when you get to that dump station, you know, there's, some of the roads kind of converge there and then they stop anyway. So what we would have been doing is kind of replacing dead-end parts of roads that, that were just the end of, of the pavement. So they would cut through these and in this case, they don't, they don't repair them, they just put a crushed rock surface back on. That is a, a large cost savings there, $14,144. That's another one to save, $2,045 would, would change the material that's used. Instead of Class A limestone, they would propose to use crushed concrete, saves $7 per ton on that. Uh, the other, one little additional cost actually down there around the dump station, this increases the size of the pad around the dump station to know that we're getting a little larger pad around the dump station even though we're not replacing all that pavement. So that's $300 there.
It's an excellent investment.
Yep. And then the other, the other one is the pollution prevention plan that we would save $4,000 if the city would do the pollution prevention plan. We've never done this before, but as I get into what's involved with preparing and then implementing a pollution prevention plan, it's a, it's a good way to save some funds and, and I would suggest we would do that. So it, it met with, with Ruth and Eric and Bill and the mayor, and we had reviewed these, these changes and we'd recommend that we would go ahead and, and make these changes. So I've asked the council to approve the contract as bid and then we're approving change order number one.
I'll make a motion to approve 2034.
Excuse me, um, who's, um, like who's laying ten-point land the tile then to, or who's laying the tile?
They, they have, okay.
Cause I'm hoping they let out the-
A couple, there are a couple other subs. Two more, is there, is there dirt work guy? Okay, and then the, the plumber, they have plumber who's doing all of the sewer and that, well, without a charter of.
Oh, and you can lay tiles?
Yeah.
I'll second.
So this would, this approves the resolution to award the contract then, 2034?
Full call.
Okay, Wolfman?
Yep.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom's?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, we have a change order number one for that to reduce the cost, so we'll, second?
Second.
Full call.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom's?
Yes.
Okay, we have pay estimate number three for the library. Cement work, I guess.
Yeah, it's, uh, what was it, primarily cement work and plumbing and HVAC, and after plumbing a lot of stuff underneath the, the concrete, so. Recommended for paint-up.
I'll make that motion, second?
I'll second.
Full call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yep.
Tom's?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go over the source water protection plan.
All right. All right, Bridgette, I've, I've unmuted you, so-
Thank you. It's nice to see you all.
Nice to see you, Bridgette.
So I guess, just, by the way, of just a little introduction, you know, that we, we had a, a Lakeview water, source water protection committee who had gotten together many times to, to take a look at, at a lot of the background information in regards to our water and how it's prepared, and then really what we were doing is looking at some opportunities then for protection. So the idea being if you can protect that water and not have any of the, the bad things happen to it that require expensive treatment, come out ahead in the long run then. So, um, we did it, we have our coordinator here with us tonight, Bridgette, and just wanna start talking through that, a, a few of the highlights there, Bridgette?
Yeah, certainly, um, uh, first I want to thank everybody for their hard work. Your community does a great job of organizing, like organizing and having a, a good long-term vision for the, for your community, and I appreciate that. I do want to just, yeah, just let everyone know that the, the plan is finished, everyone should have received a copy of it. It does go through some data that we collected, um, together from what we had available at the Department of Natural Resources and then what the city had available as far as, um, some of the, the testing and, um, the requirements that they have. And then the data also that supports, um, the water movement in the area when we talk about groundwater and the water that's being used for the public water supply, um, that's included in this plan. And, uh, there's more information in, about that type of data available through the DNR and through the city as well. What we did was we prioritized areas in the city according to a 200-foot radius around each well and then along with a map that delineates the land that, um, surface, there can be surface contamination, um, coming from. So we did that, um, like Scott said, we did meet many times, um, to make sure that all, everything that we wanted to address had been put into the plan. Um, if you go through it, you'll see, uh, well, first you'll see maps and charts and that's kind of that data I was talking about. And then, um, we have potent, potential contaminant sources that we have prioritized, um, well inventories, contaminant sources, that would be considered non-point contaminant sources, um, as well. And then in the last half of the plan, we do have the planning steps that we went through as a committee and, um, some of the planning steps as a committee have not been completed, but those are, that, they're a little either complete or to be determined as the city goes forward, adopts, if, if you were to adopt this plan as your own. Those would just be guidelines for the continuation of planning and, um, collecting resources. After that is the actual action plan and it is charted very well and then it is organized by priority. Um, we have like high, high, medium, good things to document, things to, to, um, to monitor. And, uh, so those are all split into categories. And then in the back of the plan, we do have, I, we, we wanted to be prepared in case there were, um, opportunities to work further out into the watershed, um, not necessarily remaining within the designated capture zones for the groundwater. But in the rear of the plan, that information and those resources to be used at, at a later date have been highlighted in red. So those are kind of the agricultural components and resources that we would want to have if we were to work further up into the watershed north of the city. Something similar to what's being done in the, uh, lake protection, um, sorry, uh, the lake protection initiative. So, um, that's been a really good resource as well, the Black Hawk Lake Water, uh, Black Hawk Lake Protective Association, they were very involved, so, um, that's really quick overview and I could take questions or, the intent tonight is to have the council approve this plan and then I would be submitting it in the morning to the DNR for their approval. Then the city would have an approval letter and then it can be documented however the, however the city would like it to be. It's always revisable, so, um, there will be a, the city will have a copy of the board document that can be revised and changed at any time. So, if there's any questions?
So with this plan, do we have to do this every so many years, take a look at it, or does this set us up for?
So it, it is, it's not required to, it's recommended and it is written into the plan a, um, an implementation timeline. Uh, it really is dependent on the amount of involvement that we have going through the implementation process and the types of resources that are being, um, that are available to the city. So it is written in here as, um, the city will continue to do one year of quarterly meetings to revisit the plan and then also discuss successes or moving forward. Um, I know that even throughout the planning process, we had begun, uh, developing some presence within the, and that was just slipping my mind, the little celebration in June, but, um,
Oh, yeah.
plans have changed with that due to the situation. But yes, it is, it is the responsibility of the city to, to revisit the plan and, um, kind of follow through, it's a self-regulated plan, but there is, um, there's a little schedule written out on page four.
So who pays for this, the city or the county, or who pays for the testing and all this? Who gets the money from this? Anybody? Are, ain't, ain't there a cost to this? Cashier?
Would you like me to?
Yes.
So the actual planning process, there's no cost to the city. Um, my services were free and through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, so, um.
Just checking.
The planning itself has been a free process, it's also a voluntary process, and, um, the steps within the plan, we've tried to design the plan in a way to have at least one partner designated for each step that would potentially cost money. There are a lot of resources written into the plan and from those resources, we can always partner out further as projects come about or, um, you know, if someone is in need of utilizing something within the plan. We did try to design it in a way where the cost wouldn't fall on the city and the cost wouldn't fall on the residents or the customers as much as possible. We didn't plan for making it very expensive, um, but relying on those partners that have already been dedicated to source water protection throughout the state, those, they are, they're expecting to be relied on because they do have access to funding for specific projects and things.
So there, there are a few things in the plan I just want to point out and talk just, just a little bit and we'll just direct you to certain pages. So just starting on page 19, this is just more interesting maybe than, than anything else. These are, are the capture zones that, that we've focused on to where if you see this as a, a two-year zone and a five-year zone, 10-year zone. So if, if you're at the, the red line delineates that the two-year zone, I would always think of it as a, a drop of rain falls on the red line, it takes two years to, to get to our wellhead area, okay? So that's, these are the areas then that are kind of highlighted, but a lot of the other things on the next page, page 20, just shows this 200-foot zone of control. Okay, so the city has this 200-foot zone of control around our wells. Now, we don't own all the property around our wells, some of it's private. But we do have some restriction then on, on uses of, of that, of that property and chemical application and that type of stuff about things that we would do to encourage, um, good stewardship near to our, our water points. The other thing that I really want to point out to you, let's jump to page 30, where you get into the action plan. Okay, these are, are items that the committee highlights as things that we could do to, uh, do for the betterment of our source water quality. Now, some of them, there are some costs to, to doing some of them, but if, if you, when you read through this, you'll see a lot of it deals with public education. So it's, it's trying to get the word out to the, to the citizens about, uh, source water quality and what they can do then to positively affect that. This item on page 30, though, this, this was a new item that came up out of our, out of our committee dealing with isotope testing. So if we're interested in our nitrates and we want to know where they come from, you can do this type of testing to distinguish whether the nitrates are, are organic or whether they come from chemicals. So, um, we may at some point look at that. Top of the next page was gonna be one of our big ways to kick off our public education plan. That it says the city of Lakeview will host a community event in the spring 2020. Well, this was going to basically be a, kind of a little walkthrough about, about how our water is come, is made. And we show people where the, initially where the, the wellhead is down on Sock Rail, Rail Trail and we can gather there and then we'd walk up towards the plan, then we'd do a, a plant tour and encourage folks to learn a little bit more about, uh, their water treatment. This was going to occur during, during May or June and of course that's been, been really pushed back, nothing pending on that yet. But then you see a lot of the other things deal, deal with education, whether it's sign or with, signs or whether it's public brochures, that type of stuff. The other thing I think that, that works so great for Lakeview on this is that the public is fairly well-informed about water quality as it relates to the lake. And a lot of those same things can apply to source water quality. One, some of the things here talk about establishing deep-rooted vegetation like near our wells. Yeah, and then that's the same thing that we do with, with rain gardens and whatnot to, to treat surface waters. So I think people get a good understanding of that. Um, the plan, the plan is voluntary. You know, if there's some expectations, we will continue to meet and be active in our, especially our education efforts. But you see, if there's some, some things in there ultimately that the city would be involved with, does cost some money, but the, but it, it always remains voluntary. Not, your feet aren't held to the fire to make sure this happens.
So the well on the Sock Rail Trail is, you know, surrounded by grass, is that what you call a deep-rooted?
No, it would be like native plantings and, and that type of stuff.
Any more questions? Otherwise I think we should have a motion to approve the plan.
I'll make the motion to approve the plan.
Second?
I'll second it.
Full call.
Okay, Muller?
Yes.
Tom's?
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yep.
Reese?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Thank you, Bridgette?
Hey!
All right.
Long, a lot of work, long, several months.
Yeah, yeah, and I do want to say also it's been fantastic. One of the easiest groups to work with, that's for sure.
We'll take that.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, we're gonna go over the nuisances. Reese?
Yep, it's me. Uh, I haven't got a lot done, but I've changed how we're doing things, I've kind of turned it over to my staff to take care of. I've got a big case I'm working on at Wall Lake, John knows what it is. So my staff is now in charge of it, so, for the time being anyway, so. It's transition, but we're getting them talking to people and getting stuff done.
Reese, is there a chance that we could get between now and the next council meeting, the staff want to take pictures of the nuisance that they see?
Sure.
At the next council meeting, we can have those pictures.
Yeah, that'd be right, yep, we can do that.
And I want to go back to the spreadsheet that we started last year.
That would actually work better because-
And have an updated spreadsheet at every council meeting?
Sure.
Like we started off with?
Sure.
And with that, you know, last year, last, I remember it was late in the fall when we did three nuisance cases that were, we were, we decided to go ahead and go to court about them.
Yep.
Remember?
Mm-hmm.
I can, I don't seem to have an update on those.
I screwed those up, I just got, uh, let, notice from the court on it that I've got to turn around and refile them. But, um, yeah, they were filed, I have to serve a paper notice on it that said, and I'll have to get with the Dave to figure out what they're talking about. Dave, do you know what they're talking about?
Oh, hold on, hold on here, I gotta-
Wait a minute, Dave, we can't hear you.
I gotta unmute you, or can you unmute yourself?
Uh, I think so.
There, yeah, now, you're good now.
It says, Dave, I have to, uh, file a written notice to them, do you know what that means?
Right, I think instead of doing citations, what we would do, uh, as they've suggested is, is to put, build that spreadsheet and then get me the property addresses and then I'll just send out the notices to abate.
Okay.
And it gives them the right to ask for a council hearing within seven to 10 days depending on where we're at in the month.
So, perfect.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yep, that's an excellent idea, Dave.
That, that way we don't, that way we don't automatically go to court right away, we, we give them a legal notice to abate. If they don't request a hearing, then we have authority under the ordinance to simply go in and abate the nuisance and spread the costs as property taxes for the abatement. So, um, I appreciate your, your energy in doing that, Reese, but you're slowing me down.
Well, so, Dave, the only question I have then is, is, you know, last year we talked about this, I remember that you told us that if we went to court, the court ruling would be in force. Like, so we, so let's say we went after someone that, that wasn't taking care of, they weren't mowing and they had excess vegetation and whatever, that the winter wouldn't hurt because then by the time we got to court, we're in late fall, and then the winter come along, so the situation kind of takes care of itself, and then in the spring, we start going back into the same thing. And didn't you tell us that the court, a court order would, um, keep that in force?
Carry on.
Yeah, we might have to bring it up all the time? Yeah, we might have to bring it up all the time?
Right, once we get a court order, it's enforceable. And it's a matter of degree, you know, if we're talking about weeds and mowing, we spread that, you know, that's three hundred dollars, say, max on that. If we're talking about tearing down someone's building, I want a court order to authorize that and to protect us from liability, give them the opportunity for hearing, you know, exercise due process on their behalf. But if it's a simple matter of, say, removing a junk car, you know, the damages there such that I don't think we need the protection of the court order. But if we're going to take down buildings or trees, especially, trees are more trouble than buildings, but anything that relatively, if I view it as something that's going to get us some exposure to liability if I don't have a court order to protect us, then I'll file the court action. But we're talking about weeds and vehicles and dogs and that type of thing, I could send them the notice to abate and then we can go in and basically, if they don't ask for a hearing with the council to request additional time or an excuse as to why they're not performing, then we, under our ordinances, have the ability to go in and simply self-enforce that.
And I understand that, I just, I just, you know, don't want to get into the, so I guess we could give you input on individual cases, but I don't want to get into a thing where we go after them with the ordinance issue and then they clean it up and then they allow it to go right back where it was before, and it's just a constant, constant turmoil. That's the only thing I'm worried about.
Right, and that six fifty-seven A action where we've been on their property several times and it keeps repeating, that's when you go in and get an injunction, that's when you need the court's help.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yes. The ones, the ones that, those three that we were looking at, those should be able to be remedied simply by sending the notice and if the property owners don't comply with our ordinances, we could, we would then go in and self-help and then spread the cost. And it's always a question of degree of these matters because, you know, if you put three hundred dollars on somebody's property taxes, that hurts, but it's not subject to that much complaint. If you tear someone's down garage or something like that, then we need the protection of the court.
So the way I understand this is, is that the officers are going to do the investigation and then the info goes to Dave and he files the letters and does the legal work?
That's the way I understand it.
I think that's a good idea.
I do too.
And if you're going to do vehicles, run an owner check of the vehicle, get a picture of the plate, you know, so I know which vehicle we're dealing with on that, on vehicles. Dogs and cats move around a lot, so we'll have to communicate a little bit about that.
Oh, and by the way, Dave, check your inbox tomorrow.
All right.
Dave, what we would do on real things, did we ever allow them to sell their properties? Didn't we have to release something?
Well, I got a call from Jeff Minnick, who represents two of the sisters. He wanted to know what they had to do to be able to sell the properties. I said that the council had already approved vacating that alley, which is between those properties, it's not a used alley. And I said the council was not agreeing to release the train station, or whatever they call that, depot property. And I said, the city's ready to go, I mean, we're not standing in the way of your selling those properties. I mentioned that we would like to abbreviate the taking title to the junkyard part of it. And he was going to talk to Mike Green. Mike Green's the one that first approached the council about being able to sell the two houses.
Right.
And we had a little dispute about how much ground we were going to give up, so to speak. And I think this current pandemic has kind of slowed down Mike's activities too, so say they're going ahead, they'd have to have an auction possibly to sell the properties. They can only have ten people at the auction, so it's just not a good business model.
So what are you saying then, that this is just kind of in a limbo for a while?
Pardon me?
So it's kind of in a limbo for a while?
Well, the clock's running on the properties because each of those assessments for the cleanup that the city expended has been spread on their property taxes. So this payment that's coming up, I think they should be paying like eight thousand dollars, for example, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, I can get it out of my file, but it's not important, it's a number that I don't expect that they're going to pay. So then the property, after non-payment of the taxes, would normally come up for tax sale, but because of the ordinance that the Sack County Supervisors just passed, we've notified them that that property is not to be sold for tax sale, that the city intends to take title over non-payment of the tax or the assessment. But that takes time, it takes two and a half years.
So if I understand this right, then you can't, you don't think those two properties, those two homes are going to be sold until they can have a change in COVID attendees? Is that?
I don't, you know, Mike Green was appointed as receiver in the court action that we filed, or actually, they filed it, and he was to liquidate the properties for the estate of the lady that died, Pauline, I believe. And he's just kind of, he's come to us, you know, first of all, everything that went on as far as the cleanup, and then after that, cost got spread, that kind of put the brakes on him selling the entire property. So he came back with selling the two residential properties and he had a problem because there's an alley in there somewhere that we don't even know where it's at exactly, but he found it through his company. And we, the city council agreed to vacate that, and at that point, I thought the sales would be going forward on the two houses. We don't have liens on the two houses.
Right.
We only have, we have liens on the depot property and the, what used to be the junkyard.
So really, all they're waiting for is to, all they were waiting for was us to vacate, was to give them permission for that alley? And then they could have went ahead and sold it?
They could have, yeah.
If they can, amongst themselves, come to the conclusion that they're going to sell it, you know?
But that doesn't really have anything to do with our lien, because our lien is just going to be on the property behind them.
Yeah.
So they could move forward on, so when they keep saying they can't move forward, they could. I guess that's what I get.
Yeah, on the house sales.
Okay.
I think the two sisters that are represented by Jeff Minnick know that. I'm not sure about the rest of them. They don't have attorneys anymore. I've suggested from time to time that they sign quitclaim deeds and get this thing over with, but they can't even agree on that.
So what do we do at some point? Do we go after them for a nuisance of these two homes?
I've sent them a letter on at least one of these homes, I think Pauline's home. I don't know whether I was aware of there was another house in there.
There's two, and they've both been vacant for years and they're in poor shape and people...
I sent them letters on the two properties that we could go in and, you know, in that case, I'd want to go to the court and get an order to take down the house. But then I get met with, well, we're going to sell them, so then I don't take them to court over it.
So we would maybe have to go the nuisance route?
We could, but if they're not going to sell the properties, then we would go, we can go the nuisance route, we're set up to do that. I've sent the notices out, they didn't request a hearing from the council, I don't think. And so we're good to go either by the self-help remedy, so to speak. And Mayor, don't take that too far, I want to talk to you before you self-help, okay?
I'll do that.
All right, just run it by me, okay?
Yep.
But I'd always, when we're taking down buildings or taking down homesteads, we're going to need a court order and we're going to need to show the court that that's something that's our last resort. So Vicki, I think your question actually is, what can we do to get them moving along? And I keep getting told that they're going to sell those two houses at an auction, Mike Green's told me that, Jeff Minnick indicates his two clients want to do that, and it doesn't happen. And of course, we had the pandemic and, like I said, Mike Green's not real anxious to have an auction that only ten people can attend.
Well, maybe when they open up the fifty, that could take care of it, because at some point, we'll have to go after them for abandoned buildings, because otherwise it's just going to sit there. It's just, because I don't think they'll ever all agree on the proper way to move forward.
I can't believe there are ten people at auction.
I agree, Dave, but...
Dave, are these counted as from six fifty-seven?
Yep. They're like a nap, too.
I just think that's going to be our next step. Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
No more on nuisances? City Minister in report?
Yeah, a couple of things there about four oh eight Main Street. Of course, the building's down and everything has been filled in with the black dirt. The next step in that process is getting that environmental clearance, yet it comes from the USDA for Bogues to continue to utilize USDA funding on it. Okay, to have the application, and he called me with one last question on it again today, but the application's basically completed on the environmental application.
So he does this environmental clearance request through the USDA?
Yes.
And you believe that he's close to having submitted that?
Yes.
But he has not submitted it to your number?
No, he was asking questions about it today, so, yes.
You going to follow up then on that?
As you can.
Yep.
Because I had plans today to really get to work on the development agreement and that, of course, didn't happen. But that's the next step, is we'll get a draft of a development agreement that has those timelines in it about anticipated actions.
That'd be great, I just want to move forward.
Yeah, exactly. So because...
We don't want to wait till the fall.
Yep. Take a look at page twenty here real quick about COVID-19 stuff again, just a few of the highlights there. Of course, lots more restaurants and whatnot are opened and I can get a haircut here before too long. Farmer's Market, Terry, is, we're holding off for a little bit, but they're eligible to be open, but...
Well, not really. They've got more, we have more rules to open that Farmer's Market than that P&amp;Z does to build a house. I guarantee you, we've got pages of rules.
So were, so did you consult with, I mean, the two main?
Every Farmer's Market around here and, like, every market that we knew about.
But the, but the two main vendors down there, I thought, was you and Keys, would that be fair to say?
Yep, and...
And did you talk to Keys? I mean, are they in on this discussion?
Yep, yeah, we called them. Yeah, we've decided together that, well, in the first place, they don't have anything ready for this in, by the end of this week, you know, anyway, so. But then we had other people that want to be in that, that can't be in.
Yeah, because they don't qualify.
And we don't want to cause all this problem. We have ten vendors there that we need to get along with, I think.
So are Keys, are they, I mean, I guess they're probably looking at this, but, because their, like, your stuff is all wrapped, their stuff is not, and it's out there for people to handle, so are they, are they kind of rethinking?
You can't even have that on the front table now, like a table like this, so the public can come up to it. You have to have it on the table in back, you, we have to bring it up. If they open it up, there's no choice but to buy it. If they don't like it, that's theirs.
Well, that's my question. So like Keys, where their stuff wasn't wrapped, your stuff is. Are, do they think there's any changes in that coming in June or?
Every, well, Des Moines has cars drive by and they can order what they want and they'll put it in their cars. They can't even get to walk on the street.
So they can't actually look at their produce prior to...
Everybody's, yeah, worried about it, you know, they're, well, there's too many rules, you know? And I bring them rules, actually, I meant to bring them tonight, and I'll bring them down to Scott. It's more involved than this rule that you, and this is from USDA, you know, and it's just not gonna, well, we're hoping for July fourth, we've had been different vendors say that they're not sure they're going to do it at all.
So does the USDA control this or the governor?
The Farmer's Market, the USDA controls, yeah. So we've looked into this, we've done a lot of phone time and trying to, it's a big decision, you know, but we would have probably been the only ones there for, normally Keyses aren't there, but the other ones, the only other one we could get ahold of was the honeybees. You know, they have bees, honey, and, but they didn't want to get involved in this until this thing quieted down. And actually, we've had more, well, we have more cases in Sack County now than we've had all along today, I think they said they had ten again. So, and we run scared because we ain't going to hide in the closet because, I mean, we're worried about, we're not afraid, you know, so afraid that, you know, I go to church a lot and I'm, you know, I'm ready to go, you know?
Few other things just about libraries, of course, they can be open now too, but our library is not open yet and it just has more to do with the construction project than anything else. They have a library board meeting on June ninth and they'll reconsider that again. Okay, the governor did extend those closures of particularly playgrounds and swimming pools. And those closures are extended until Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, so for Memorial Day weekend, the playgrounds will continue to be roped off and the splash pad won't begin functioning then until at least the twenty-eighth. I think we'll be, certainly be ready to go, we don't anticipate any problems, but we're not able to open it. Shelters, we continue to not allow congregations of more than ten in the shelters. I would tell you that we have one rental of this, of half of the Centennial House for this weekend for a come-and-go bridal shower where they assure me that there'll be no more than ten people at a time. So if you see something down there, that is, you know, being rented once this weekend. Bathrooms, the bathroom by In-Town Bay is open, they will open the bathroom in Speaker Park, Eric's got to do some plumbing there yet. And then all of the bathrooms in Camp Crescent are ready to go. Only the new one is open right now, but by the weekend, everything will be, will be open. And on camping, Camp Crescent is open and we're just complying with the governor's orders on that about try to do what you can for no groups more than ten and encourage the social distancing. Other than that, they, last weekend was fairly busy down there, you saw lots of campers and this weekend, I guess, is basically booked up. So expect a busy weekend.
One thing, another thing was about the Farmer's Market is we had to have, somehow get a wash station in there and every time we sold, we had to change gloves and wipe the tables. So it's, it's quite complicated, I mean, and we can only have two people. I mean, we, you know, normally, like on Memorial Day, we would, you know, our daughter comes over, can't do that, you can't have the people in there. So, and like Keyses, they have their kids and they can't do that either, it's got to be one of the kids or, yeah, it's pretty, it's really quite, quite a bunch of rules.
They need to order, they need to open the outdoor stuff up, that's just my opinion.
Access to City Hall, as of right now, remains limited. I would expect that next week, hopefully, the governor lets more stuff on the twenty-seventh, we would expect to open City Hall wide open on the twenty-eighth. This mass gathering thing, okay, again, mass gatherings are still limited to ten people. So as far as any of our big summer events, we... So as far as any of our big summer events, we had community club meeting tonight before this and they were, of course, had already canceled, Simple Sample canceled the first concert. No decision yet on the second concert, on that July 4th concert. They wanted a couple more weeks before they would have to, have to make that decision. But that is potentially on, I think people have kind of come to the realization there won't be any food at the, at the concerts, most likely.
Oh.
And then Water Carnival, there's a Water Carnival committee meeting on the 27th and at that time, I would expect some decisions to be made about what Water Carnival looks like, because the only decision that's been made now is that there, there is no midway. And so it's, it's going to look different, no matter what.
Hey, that's something we, Joy and I was talking about too, if they did have the parade, would they be able to throw candy out? I don't know.
Yeah, I guess.
I was just, we was just wondering about that. No touch of rules.
Oh, good.
No.
Kaydon, you disappointed?
I know.
Yeah. What else? I've got a couple of things. Um, this COVID-19 thing has caused a lot of problems with our mosquito spraying.
I saw that.
We do not have a certified mosquito operator here. So we'll, we'll play it by ear here a little bit about what happens on the, on the 27th and whether anything opens up and we can quickly get somebody tested.
No, it's because with all this rain, we might have the same thing we had last year, we had trouble. Is there not a certified one in an area town that we could?
That'd be another thing to, to look at, is to see if we can get anybody who's willing to.
Could you get Jeremy back or wouldn't you do it? No?
He's in Jefferson.
I'm not even, yeah, I'm not really sure where he's at, but.
Maybe we could do it online or something.
Can we do it online? Zoom?
You can zoom.
Zoom it.
Stand there with a bug holder.
Um, this past weekend, we had some vandalism down around the mini golf course. And, and they broke some of the, some of the light fixtures and the globes and stuff down there at the, at the mini golf course and they, they, over by the West Stone Pier, they threw two sets of barricades into the lake. Tore them apart, threw them in the lake, we've never recovered.
Jimmy says he has a magnet he can use to get the metal off of it. Make him go down and get it, I thought.
Well, we're gonna, you know, assess the, the charges to it. We, they have found four juveniles who, who were responsible for that and, and they've been, been cited and we came up with bill, with a, with a bill for that and it's, we had a total bill of over 1,100 bucks on, on the damage and our time to repair it, so.
I wanted to discuss that when Royce was here and I forgot, but I know, like, with the laws and the courts and how all that works, that, that's what you have to go by, but I think a lot of people are concerned that, you know, that nothing gets, will be done. And even if it is financial constitution, which would be great, and maybe these kids are too young, I don't know the ages of all of them, but, you know, community service would go a long ways. And I think, you know, Ruth, Ruth could find all kinds of things down there to do, that, you know, I think people are concerned of seeing kids get away with things like this, so, you know, all they got was a slap on the hand, yeah, we caught them, but we didn't really do anything to them. And, and again, I understand the laws and you have to be careful, but I'm just, we just want a public record about that.
We used to, when they used to have trouble in school, they'd send them out to wash the windows on the bus, on the inside, not the outside, whatever they needed, ladder, on the inside, but you can't do that no more because of child labor loss.
You know, so, you know, I don't know, I don't know that it would work, like I said, but I'm just saying that, that's why I think people are watching, they would like to see something happen. The courts used to assign.
But they don't do that anymore.
Don't do any of that anymore?
We, it is a very, very rare occasion.
That's too bad, that was one of the best things they did.
Yep. You used to do that a lot, Minnick, so you've been.
I remember too long to do a report at the camp, though.
I wonder why they don't learn.
Could we take a look at, at the handwritten note that was, was handed out to you there? This is actually the, the note that Jason from Grunden Hicks went over with us this morning, we asked for an update and, and this is his update. So yeah, Monday, Monday through Wednesday, well, it's actually Tuesday and Wednesday, they did not work today because of wet conditions, but Tuesday and Wednesday, tie in that, that north trunks who are in there, so when they talk about that, that's the one by TCT, okay? Tuesday and Wednesday, tie that in, set the last manhole, do the pressure test. Thursday and Friday, they begin to, to finish the watering and they got to get to the, there's a fire hydrant at TCT and they got to make the connection to that fire hydrant.
What is removing the driveway?
That's room, room, there's a, an access into, I think it's Watts's Field, they had added an extra access.
Right north of the bridge, yeah. Yeah, they take that back up.
Yep, uh, okay, then lay new, lay new main down, down ditch, about half a block to the new hydrant, that's still the water there by TCT, and tie in the new main, get pressure test that, disinfect that main, and then they're, they'll be done, they'll just grave and see. Okay, what he called the influence line, that's the main line from the, from the sewer plant. So on Tuesday and Wednesday, they finished laying that pipe, so they are, they're relaying all of the pipe between manhole six and seven, and that was the area where they had the, the wavy bore pipe through there, so they've taken out all that bore pipe and will have traditionally laid sewer pipe there. Thursday and Friday, backfill, then they, they will camera that before they backfill, Thursday, Friday, backfill, then hopefully they have, next Tuesday, they would plan to camera it again. And assuming everything comes through okay, they, they tie that old plan in, and then Wednesday, they're online and, and start to fill the lagoon. Add things to do out at the lagoon. You got to put the aeration pipe in when the lagoons are full, do the blower start up then after that, start up the UV system after that, do some cleaning, you're going to top everything off with, with some finish coat of rock and do some finish grade, and then of course, the lunchless. So that's just the, the update about the work that's remaining and when, when they would anticipate that to happen. Also had some discussion with Grunden Hicks, they wanted to get together and start an initial discussion about liquidated damages, we haven't had any discussion in regards to dollars on that. But, but we did have some, some discussion with them about their, about their future status, and then also talked with them some about this notion about getting that third year of maintenance done. So we, Bob East has done a lot of work for us on that then.
Good job, Whitey.
Has been talking with them about that and.
Because Whitey's the one that hung in there tough on that, everybody needs to know that.
Yep, that they're, they're very much open to, they're very much open to this, this third year.
And they were not in the beginning.
Just understand that it's still as part of, of the negotiation at the end in regards to liquidated damages, okay?
And this is all, as long as we don't get any rain this week.
Wow, the work.
Looks like there's going to be a lot of rain this week.
Not Friday, but then Saturday, Sunday. So.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
In the joint.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.